If so, please come forward. We don't have the podium out, but we can sit at the table with us and clearly state your name and address for the clerk. Any members on the panel?
Thank you.
Item number seven, iteration of the proposed bylaws. Madam Clerk, please read the directions stemming from this public meeting.
Directions stemming from this public meeting will be weak to the draft bylaw and amended schedules as presented to council on November 7th. Or sorry, not amended schedule for draft bylaw and schedules as presented to council on November 7th, 2023, be brought forward for three readings at November 21st, 2023, meeting of council.
This is the recommendation moving forward. And now we will adjourn. This does conclude the public meeting. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Item number six, reports of municipal officers in communications, item 6.1, handling hazardous waste. Brian Springer, manager, operations and environmental secretary.
Madam Mayor and counsel, thank you, Brian. You to counsel, I'm here today to further discuss the handling hazardous waste, excuse my voice that I drove and I had the heater on, I think I dried myself right up. Excuse me, prior in the past, we've had a six-hour hazard municipal hazardous waste event. Funding was cut in 2019. Up until that time, we showed that the event was actually cash positive for us to the tune of around $10,000 to $15,000. In 2019, that fell, so we all of the funding was actually cut in half. And then we started to run actually a deficit of about 15,000. September of this year, all funding was cut. So looking ahead to us, for us to host a six-hour municipal hazardous waste event for six hours once a year, I estimate that our costs will range between $30,000 to $40,000. So thinking out of the box, we would like to suggest that we develop a process where residents would be able to discard their hazardous waste on a weekly basis from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, one day a week, year-round. At a proposed location, which we recommend is at Public Works at 1 Dunfield Road. We are waiting for confirmation of conformance from the MECP required to store the hazardous waste at the Public Works yard in approved containers. The MECP will advise if amendments to the town's current ECA may be required. We have actually a generator number and maybe that's all that is what was needed. But I am actually about, you know, to confirm that. The financial savings will be very considerable comparatively to hosting a six-hour, one-day event per year. Detailed costs for modifications to the fences and secure structure to house the hazardous materials gathered until removed by authorized contractors or agencies, i.e. the Electronic Product Recycling Association, known as the EPRA, and K R Thompson, which is known as KRT. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, thanks for the report, Brian. I originally had put force notice to motion for the one-day hazardous waste deposit after a resident had asked me about it. And at that time, I found out that the physical services was already working on this report. I'm very pleased that 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 was taking place because, you know, it is a real problem. I mean, what do you do with your paint? What do you do with your old oil? Like, what do you do with your fluorescent tubes? These are all hazardous, household hazardous waste that every household has. And in bigger communities where they have a population base and they can make it economic, you can do it in some cases seven days a week, but at least five days a week. Here, I hazard a guess to say the bulk of it ends up in our landfill site and the rest of it ends up in places even worse. We've all seen it. So I'm very pleased that this that this is being presented tonight. Also, and I know that I talked to the C A O today and the C A O talked to Stephan. Another area that I was concerned about was electronic waste. Because right now I've got all sorts of small electronic waste in my house. It's just sitting there. But I'm not going to, sorry, I'm cheap. I'm not going to spend the gas to drive out to a landfill site to drop it off. And since this is requiring fence adjustments and a site location and you're going to have to do whatever your site location makes sure that it's approved. I'm suggesting that at the same time, if possible, we consider looking at including electronic waste, which would improve the service. And I believe, and I could be wrong, that we make money off electronic waste. And we sell it. Yes. And so if we increase the volume, we can cover part of the cost of providing hazardous waste. So again, thank you very much and thanks, Stephan. These are two things that are important to me.
Anything further from members of council? I'll have them reading the motion.
Moved by Counselor Ridgeway, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. A result that report number 2023 T W 15 entitled Handling Hazardous Waste, he received for information.
All in favor? opposed, now noted, item carried unanimously. Thank you. Item number 6.2, operational key performance indicators. Update, order three, Stephanie Dell, strategic initiatives and workplace performance coordinator.
Good evening, free Madam Mayor to the rest of council. I'd like to summarize the report noting that administration will be providing now quarterly updates on the operational key performance indicators, also known as OKPIs for the purpose of performance reporting to council and to the public, starting with quarter three, which is the first report that we are giving to council. And I just want to mention some of the valuable statistics in the report, also known as attachment one. Beltman Services, their building division has had an increase in positive outcomes related to community standards warning. And corporate services has had, the treasury division has seen an increase in tax receivables. The clerks division has had low numbers on statistics chart, but it does not reflect the time allocated for each of their activities as well as the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board, the secretarial service. It takes on average about 20 hours of human resources time per meeting to include the preparation for the meeting, the actual meeting and the post-meeting management. So when you look at the attachment one, you might see low numbers, but there's a lot of work that goes into it. And it should also be noted that the OKPIs may change based on certain factors, including departmental shifts in specific needs. And with the new strategic plan in place, there is a possibility that the OKPIs change as a result of canceled initiatives to be reflected in operational KPIs. And each director that is here today is able to speak and answer any questions that you have specifically related to the statistics report, also known as attachment one.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Owen?
Not a question, but thank you. This is a very, these are very important documents for council because we're not involved in day-to-day operations. And at the same time, we sort of answer to the public for day-to-day operations. And so this gives us a measure. And if we get a specific question, we can refer back to this document and let the public know exactly what's happening. So I think it's a very important tool for council. So thank you very much.
Anything further? Nothing further noted. Madam Clerk, I'll have you read the motion.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Janice Springer, seconded by Counselor Vah Chava, being resolved at report number 2023 C A O six entitled Operational Key Performance Indicators, OKPIs, update, order three, he received for information.
All in favor? opposed, now noted, item carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. Item number 6.3, winter operations and updated winter maintenance manual. Stephan Forte, Director of Public Works.
Madam Mayor and the council, thank you for having me. I'm here today to discuss winter operations and to present the updated winter maintenance manual. Last winter, we started utilizing both road graders to keep the snowpack layer very thin on our roads. This is done through a continuous process of shaving down the snowpack layer using a variety of blades. We use straight blades when the snowpack is softer in warmer weather. And we use serrated blades in colder weather when the snowpack is very icy. We utilized this technique last year and we did see positive results. Winters have somewhat changed over the past 10 years. Winters in Kirkland Lake used to stay below zero between December and spring. But now we deal with freeze-thaw cycles nearly every month of the winter season, including January, which does present our apartment with challenges. So keeping the snowpack layer thin has become very important to ensure traffic keeps moving when warmer weather hits Kirkland Lake over the winter season. The biggest challenge encountered last winter was a lack of available third-party dump trucks. The town's public work department is well-equipped with snow blowers. We have one for the airport, one for Rose Department, and we have an older spare unit. Snow removal in towns has been done with one blower. And the town has the ability to try with a second blower. However, on average, we can only ever obtain five or six trucks on third-party. Oh, what we actually need is eight hired trucks to keep up with one blower. So the lack of available trucks right now is limiting our ability to try to increase snow removal production. The updates to the winter maintenance manual were actually very minor. And the only change worth noting was the addition of the sidewalk maintenance near St. Jerome School because the sidewalk that leads to that school was reinstated this year. Okay, speaking of sidewalks, it's worth noting that the public works department does get the occasional request or comment asking to clear the snow off of more sidewalks. The clearing of snow on sidewalks has remained the same for many years. Sorry. The clearing of snow on sidewalk has remained the same over the years and is still considered to be effective today. Something to note is that our workforce is tailored to our existing winter maintenance plan. Therefore, increasing the scope of work is not recommended as it will drive cost up and we will need to increase the workforce. In addition, all coast sidewalks over the winter is used by the Public Works Department to store snow. If we reduce our snow storage capacity, our winter operation will no longer function as intended, resulting in increased snow removal and thus increasing cost. Let's focus a little on level of service. Now, level of service for winter maintenance is determined by the classification of our roads. Government Road gets the most traffic, therefore sets the bar for level of service. Six classes of class one that has the heaviest traffic and class six has the lowest. Government Road or Highway 66 is registered as a class three highway. Few years ago, the Director of Public Works wanted to study the traffic volumes on Government Road with the hopes of changing the classification to the class four, which would reduce the level of service. The end goal was to reduce cost. In 2021, we purchased radars to study traffic and we determined that we were having about 6,000 vehicles per day on Government Road. In 2021, we also changed the speed limit from 60 kilometers an hour to 50 kilometers an hour from Hilltop to Alwenny. This was in preparation to lower the standards. It does mean that technically we could try to change Government Road from a class three to a class four. But please be clear that we are not recommending to change our road classification as it would result in a reduction of service to our residents. We understand winter maintenance can be challenging and we realize most residents would prefer an increase in service. But the reality is Kirkland Lake's winter maintenance is effective and provides a superior level of service to its residents and businesses. Our focus this year is cost and to closely follow the guidelines of the minimum maintenance standards.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Major?
Um, I just, I have a I thought that 2021 was, we were still in COVID. And so I don't think that statistically the tracking of traffic in 2021 would be reflective of 2023 going forward. So it may be something that we look at to review, depending on cost, of reassessing statistically how much traffic we get on Government Road.
Thank you. Counselor Owens?
We've had this plan presented to us now every year. It comes back to us and little modifications in there and it works awesome on paper. Somewhere between the paper and out on the street, something doesn't happen because we have residents complaining. I think that's must-be our number one complaint is roads. They suck in the summer. They're rough. We can't repaint them all. They suck in the winter because they're not plowed properly around time. And that's something if we go according to the road maintenance. And I'm not saying it's always like that, but there's examples, specific examples where something's going on and it's not, what's reflected in this document doesn't happen on the street. First snowfall of the season, fairly certainly met that threshold sometime in the afternoon on the Monday. Next day, our streets are still not plowed. I have to go to Abel Hard for an appointment early in the morning. I get there and I'm surprised and shocked. I didn't think it could happen. All their streets are on bare pavement, sanded, non-slippery. And I was early enough, I wanted to go see the trains, so I kind of took a detour around town and did a few of those streets and all the streets are nice and clear. Come back to Kirkland an hour after my appointment, still four by four to get up the, my street on prolonged. Why? Like, what's, what's missing in our plan to make it that it's consistent time after time after time?
I understand. I'm concerned that you're saying that we're not doing our snow planning as part of our plan because we are. So you're concerned I'm having with whether or not people's expectations are different than what's on paper. Because I can assure you both events this year were done exactly as per the letter of this meeting. But I don't know where the computer went, but let me read a few passages here. It is a municipality's policy to commence snowplowing operations where, when there is an accumulation of snow equal or greater to eight centimeters. So we wait, we have to wait for the snow to accumulate before we dispatch. Okay, so did we fall outside of this plan this year? Because I feel like it's an accusation.
How am I, like, how am I going to respond to this?
Possibly, possibly a debate between a member of council and a member of staff is not appropriate during a council.
I totally agree.
Yeah, during a council meeting, we do appreciate the wording of the manual. We do appreciate that it has been presented for the last quite a few years. We also appreciate that it is unquestionably one of our highest complaints as per most municipalities, I'm sure. What I do suggest, because we are in the middle of strategic planning, if members of the public find it worthy that they want a greater investment in our snow maintenance plan, that they have the opportunity to engage with our community, with our municipality through the strategic planning. And I highly suggest they take that opportunity to voice their opinions very strongly on this matter. Thank you both. Counselor Shaba? Did you have a question?
Yes, I do.
I've been doing that.
Oh, another. Do you, Madam Chair? I live in Sharpies and some of us that live in Sharpies. If you come from the west end of Sharpie to come to Kirkland Lake, all right, you would hit the Highway 66. And you drive a portion of that to both slightly past both of them and everything changes. Is there any way, why can't we at least keep the same standard that we have in that stretch of road all the way into Kirkland Lake, all the way to Northern College? Because many times it's not like that. Like what you was talking about that day, it's day or night. When you travel that highway and get a booth from Winter Kirkland Lake on Sharpie Hill, it is totally different. So I mean, you have, you talk about a little classification, but is there a higher classification for that with E M T O than us because maybe sometimes it's fire to it if we don't have it? So that's, that's just an observation from other people that live in Sharpies that we know this over the years. And my other issue that really need to be addressed, maybe with a rigorous or robust enforcement, is the fact that people are complaining about people moving their snow from their side of the road across to somewhere else, if they can property or not. But still, you know, you guys go there, do your best job and you clear the road. All of a sudden, a guy comes in with his four-wheeler and snowplow move across and you have a whole chunk of snow on the road. Where is the enforcement and how do we make sure that things like that, at least if they do happen, people are given adequate amount of money not to let it happen?
I'm responsible for bylaw.
No.
I'm not responsible for bylaw.
I have, but the first question is, is the road different in your stretch of road from Sharpie to both of them? And how do we just go on that?
Road standard is the same, is still a class three, but the method of applying de-icing is completely different from another pavement, for example, that or with an organ, I should say, that takes care of the two extremities that are connecting link. They use a liquid form. And it's considerably more aggressive and will clear the de-ice block faster. But our standard is not to, our, the difference is that MTO usually have a bare pavement clause, that they need to get the bare pavement. We don't have that clause. Our clause is to make sure that the snow is cleared and that it is not slippery.
Thank you. Counselor Owen? Thank you. Councilor Owen?
Uh, to you, Madam Mayor, and I'm not gonna try and tell you how to do your jobs, Stefan, because I know the number of complaints we get, so the number of complaints you get must be even higher. But I did receive a concern, um, from a number of senior citizens last year. And I'm just throwing this out to see if there's possibly a way that we can improve service. And that is, um, when you're scraping the street, okay, with the grader, you end up with big chunks at the end of the driveway and I've seen it, seen it in my own driveway. And these chunks are not, they can't go through your snow blower unless you want to damage your snow blower. And a number of seniors have, have come to me and asked if something could be done. Because if you had the scarifying blade on, you would have similar sized chunks, a little bit bigger, a little bit bigger, right? Yeah, no, I can see that, but to a senior, yeah, to a senior, like, if you got a chunk that's too big to go through your snow blower, what are you gonna do? And I know, and it's not just one senior's company, it's been, I could throw my, my own voice in there, but I mean, I'm so fit and strong, it doesn't matter. So, um, that's it, I'm just throwing that out as maybe somehow we could mull it around and see if we could come up with some sort of solution, uh, to make, to give better service and make it easier for mostly senior disabled people. Thank you.
Anything further for members of council?
Madam Chair, I'll have the reading of the motion. Certainly. Moved by Council Casey Owens, seconded by Council Rick Owens. A result that report number two thousand twenty-three PW eighteen entitled Winter Operations and Updated Winter Maintenance Manual be received and filed that council adopts city town records of updated winter maintenance manual.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried. Item number six point four, Amendment to User Fees Bylaw Schedules, General Housekeeping, Jennifer Montoya, municipal question.
Good evening, members of council. Certain housekeeping amendments are being proposed to the town's user fees and charges schedules. Um, and I'm simply wish to amend that we go directly in fact billables. Town established to ensure the appropriateness and legitimacy of invoicing for those fees despite a disclaimer located within the bylaw in an effort to be open and transparent to the public on those authorities to collect. I will revisit the detailed rationale for the changes as they have been well identified in the report. However, I will provide a summary of the proposed amendments to the schedules as follows. Uh, Schedule C, the museum, a fee associated with a medium rectangular table, table cloth which was inadvertently missed and the new design of the schedules has been re-added. Schedule D, recreation and adjustment to the non-resident fee associated with thirty-minute fitness class by session was made due to a typo. Schedule G, equipment rates for public works. The fees associated with the pipe phone machine and the waterworks and the form and mud pump were inverted in the new design of the schedules, so they've been adjusted. And Schedule H, uh, which is the waste management, uh, sorry, uh, the airport, um, sorry, it's Schedule I. Nope, it is not, it is Schedule I. Uh, the hangar office rental and hangar rentals were inadvertently identified for daily, weekly, yearly rates when they should have been identified as daily, weekly and monthly rates. So as noted in the report, the airport, uh, fee justification information report will be forthcoming and it should be noted that administration intends to bring forward any changes to the two thousand twenty-four user fees and charges in tandem with the two thousand twenty-four budget presentation. Those are my comments and I'm available for questions if you're ready.
Thank you. Any questions? None noted. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Certainly moved by Council Patrick Kylie, seconded by Council Dennis Ranger. Be resolved at report number two thousand twenty-three CLK twenty-two entitled Amendment to User Fees Bylaw General Housekeeping be received. And it council directed that Schedule C, D, G and I to the town's user fees and charges by law be amended as presented within the report and filed that an amending by law be brought forward for three readings on November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number six point five, Kirkland Recreation Center Building Renovation Project, NOHFC Rural Enhancement Stream Stage Two Application. Bonnie Zachreider, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's good news for all of council. This is a good news report. Um, the Northern Ontario Harry Bunch Fund currently has a funding opportunity called the Community Enhancement Program, Rural Enhancement Stream.
So Bonnie, can I just pause for a second, Councilor Owen?
Point of order. Sorry, Bonnie, I didn't mean, my, my, uh, whatever it's called, is saying that I'm not connected to the internet.
I can access it.
Um, so I just wanted to bring that up because we can't see the reports here.
Just lost my.
You just lost your internet connection?
Yeah, like I have no reports left, I can't access them.
Yeah, yeah.
There's still. We still have internet connection. Do you want to try to refresh it?
Well, I'm trying to turn it off, but this is the first time I don't know how to turn a damn thing off.
Yes, we're on trust.
I know that's what I'm doing if it's not cooperating.
Okay, would you like to take your break here?
Yes, we're gonna take about a five minute break just for technical issues, sorry. Thank you. Okay, we're reconvening after the, um, reset for technical difficulties. We were on item six point five, Kirkland Lake Recreation Center Building Renovation Project, NOHFC Rural Enhancement Stream Stage Two Application, Bonnie Zachreider, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, once again. Thank you to council. Last year, council did approve a funding submission for initial remediation of the area that housed the old pool into usable space. Um, the report and the subsequent direction to apply for a retrofit was attached to this report. This is a two-step process. So in October of this year, the NOHFC did invite the town to submit a step two. And part of the step two application requires a bylaw resolution from council testing to its support for the project and an indication of funding commitment should the NOHFC offer a funding agreement. So this is why this is coming back to you. So as explained in the initial report, the final result of the space does not need to be immediately scoped out by any means. Um, we basically in the application envision a very versatile space that can be used by community partners for community events, for programming, for emergency preparedness, things like that. In terms of finances, we did apply for the maximum amount in the stage one and will carry that amount over into the stage two. So the maximum contribution from NOHFC would be five hundred thousand dollars. They will fund seventy-five percent of a project, so the total project application will be six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And if we do get the stage two approved, then we would include the amount that the municipality must pay in the two thousand twenty-four capital budget. So that's a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We did have an order of magnitude completed to determine what could we do with this amount of dollars. So it's remedial, it's the first steps. We're not gonna have fully functioning space after, probably. Uh, we don't have quotes, but we do have an order of magnitude or a scope estimate. So they basically had indicated, um, they could do an infill of the pool area, lay a concrete slab, remediate the flooring, because if you can imagine in a pool area, the slopes are very different, so you can have water going to a drain. So you have to remediate that to get it to a level area. Replace lighting, paint on the walls, only for the old pool area, excuse me, and the wall pool. Does not include the areas that used to be changing, so that would have to be a staged attempt down the road. There's also benefits to remediate in terms of the asset management or the asset retirement obligations. Um, and the, basically, this does meet the criteria of NOHFC, so they would like to build resilient northern communities through upgrades and repair of existing assets to improve community quality of life and strategic economic development initiatives. No guarantee we'll get the money, but we did meet the criteria for stage one and they're inviting us to do stage two.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilor Owen?
Yes, uh, thanks for the presentation, Bonnie. Before we make any decisions to go ahead with this, I'd like to see a report on what the cost of operation is gonna be for this new center. Fifteen, we have heating, we have staffing. And when the new pool was designed, as a reporter, I constantly asked for what the increased cost of operation was gonna be, the overall cost and add space and not increase your operational budget. And I was never given that information, but I think that especially in terms of long-term planning, that is very important information to have before, um, any decision is made, so just throwing that out and hope you'll pick it up.
Councilor Ranger?
To you, Madam Mayor. Does he not need a secondary motion for a report?
I didn't, I'm motion.
But you're requesting her to provide you with a report on costs?
I asked her if she would pick up on my idea. Sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm out.
I was a clear one.
I'm sorry.
I thought you were on.
No, that's.
I'm out of order.
Anything further from council members? Nothing noted. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Certainly moved by Council Laura Shabas, seconded by Council Casey Owens. A result that report number twenty-two and three CS oh oh five entitled Kirkland Lake Recreation Center Building Renovation Project, NOHFC Rural Enhancement Stream Stage Two Application be received. And it council, the town of Kirkland Lake, supported the submission of a stage two application to the NOHFC for funding assistance totaling six hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. It supports the building renovation project. That council directed CIO to submit a stage two funding application entitled Recreation Center Building Renovation Project on behalf of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake to the NOHFC as identified in the report and filed that the contribution of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars towards a set project be allocated in the town's portion of the two thousand twenty-four capital budget to cover any project related costs overrun should they occur.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number six point six, to Miss Kaming Health Unit THU Municipal Allocation Method Proposal, Lloyd Proctor, Treasurer.
Madam Mayor to council, the report in front of you, it's a response to a request from the health unit to change the underlying allocation method that they're using. Sorry, not the method, but the database that they're using for that allocation method. Uh, in summary, they're gonna go to the, the census, the national census, to, to their calculations going forward. They're asking us to support them to start using the census immediately as in two thousand twenty-four. There's some numbers in here that are based on two thousand twenty-three. Um, can't tell you what two thousand twenty-four is until they actually pass their budget, but I would expect them to be very similar to what, what's in here for two thousand twenty-three for an increase. I, you know, my, I guess my comment is, we're, we're gonna be going to a different database soon enough because MPAC is, is kind of walking away from the bare portion of this model. We're not gonna be tracking individuals per property for these purposes. So whether we use a census or a provincial model, uh, you know, there's no saying which one will be. I think it's been left up to the health units to try and get ahead of the curve. And, uh, so they're requesting that we, before the end of, sorry, I forget the date, that, uh, we, thank you, today, uh, that we support them in moving to that, to the new model, the new database.
Thank you. Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, to you, uh, Madam Chair, thank you very much for this. I, I have nothing against this, but the problem is that, uh, when you base something on census, uh, then you're, you're using numbers that are lagged behind. So censuses come up every, what, five years or so? So, uh, even though we got a lot of people moving into our community, uh, you know, there are many people here, but then you stop with, uh, population of two or three or four years ago. So I just have to caution that unless you, unless there's indexing uh, in between the census period, then we'll be, be much short of change.
Yeah, um, I think MPAC has the same problem. In a sense, they're on a four-year cycle. MPAC is matching the municipal election cycle essentially. So it's, it's a very similar problem with MPAC in itself. I think the numbers kind of speak to the fact that at least the census seems to be picking up more of what we see day to day, which is Kirkland Lake has a larger population than we're given credit for. Um, you know, the, the models don't really pick up the way we're structured right now with the, with the, uh, workforce that we have. So census is certainly closer, or it's my opinion, it seems to be closer to what we're actually seeing on the ground. And, uh, so yeah, both models are, are broken in the sense that they don't update frequently.
Councilor Owen?
Uh, I was one of the board members that pushed for this on THU. Just by looking at the numbers, we see they're off. Uh, we're paying less than what we're getting for, and some municipalities are paying a lot more than they should be. So I think as a question of fairness for the services we get out of THU, this is, this was the idea behind the motion when we passed it to THU and we needed, hopefully it does go through all municipalities, but we needed this to be able to complete our budget for this year. This one piece of the puzzle.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, I have no problem with this, but I'm just wondering, uh, with amalgamation, does this matter whether or not we pass them?
Mm-hmm. So, so regardless whether we're the two separate or we amalgamate, we're still gonna have to pay a portion and this is determining how we're facing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, anything further for members of council? I'll have the reading of the motion.
Certainly moved by Council Rick Owens, seconded by Council Casey Owens. A result that report number two thousand twenty-three in thirteen entitled Miss Kaming Health Unit THU through Community Allocation Method Proposal be received and filed that council support, supports the recommendation of Miss Kaming Health Unit just to THU and moving to a census-based allocation for board of health expenditures effective January first, two thousand twenty-four.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Thank you, sir. Item number seven, consideration of notices of motion, there are none. Item number eight, introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws, bylaw, uh, sorry, six point one, no, eight point one, I don't have my glasses on, sorry.
Moved by Council Laura Shabas, seconded by Council Rachel Owens. A result of the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sealed corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three seventy-six being a bylaw authorizing the execution of a partnership agreement between incorporation of the town of Kirkland Lake and Food Cycles Time Corporation, also known as Food Cycler, for the implementation partnership for impact candidate food-based production challenge.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item eight point two.
Moved by Council Patrick Kylie, seconded by Council Dennis Ranger. Be resolved at the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sealed corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three seventy-eight being a bylaw to amend Schedule C, D, G and I of bylaw twenty-three forty-one to establish and require payments of various fees and charges for the incorporation of the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Item number eight point three.
Moved by Council Casey Owens, seconded by Council Rick Owens. Be resolved at the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Kirk and the sealed corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three seventy-nine being a bylaw to establish a municipal accommodation tax within the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number nine, questions from council to staff, there were none submitted. Item number ten, notices of motion. Councilor Shaba?
Yes, to you, I do have one, uh, uh, creation of green space. And I will have a creation of, a creation of green space. And I'm gonna have a discussion with the CEO, uh, whether it was some time, if I have any motion forward. That would be more, uh, more likely to be powerful and competitive.
So are you bringing, sorry, are you, Madam Mayor, to, to Council Shaba, are you saying that you're, you're not identifying a motion for the next meeting? It's, it's forthcoming in the future?
Uh, yes, I'm just in the, the title of the creation of a green space or spaces.
Okay.
Uh, there is a meeting coming up, uh, later on, uh, again, that will essentially put this motion in, uh, proper focus for me.
So, so you're, Madam Mayor, not for the next meeting? Not for December fifth?
No.
Okay, so in the future?
In the future.
Okay. None noted.
Anything further under notices of motion? Further, item number eleven, councilors' reports. Councilor Kylie?
Uh, Councilor Owen and myself attended the, uh, last ESAP meeting. Uh, the main portion of the meeting was on the budget and I believe we're talking about a thirty thousand dollar increase overall in the budget, which is, uh, in the budget, which is pretty darn good. So that was, the budget was approved for two thousand and twenty-four. We should be hearing from them shortly, but it's favorable, in my opinion.
Thank you. Counselor Owen?
Yes, I was just going to say that I'm impressed with DESAP's ability to keep their costs down. In some cases, individual department budgets went up, but the municipal cost either stayed the same or lowered because they get funding from other sources as well, provincial government. And they seem to have put a, the staff at DESAP seem to have put a real effort into recognizing that municipalities, we're not a bank and that we have our own financial concerns. So I'm optimistic that this will be a good outcome for Kirkland Lake and the other municipalities within the DESAP jurisdiction.
Thank you. Anything further from members of council? For my portion this evening, everybody will be so thrilled to hear that I haven't been in the office for about a week and a half. So I have nothing written, no two-page report. However, I did want to note that today I was in Timmins to see the Chief Medical Officer of Health for Ontario, Dr. Kieran Moore, the two members of his staff and teams from both the PHU and THU regarding the merger. So the government is taking our requests seriously and we do appreciate the time and we do appreciate staff and the work that they put in at THU. And of course, it will affect every member in Kirkland Lake. So that is all that I have, Madam Corper.
Moved by Council Janice Ranger, seconded by Council Lad Shabbos. Be resolved at the verbal updates, remember the chemical blue.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Additional information? Do you have a proclamation for International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three? Whereas violence continues to be the greatest gender inequity rights issue for women, girls, and gender diverse individuals. And whereas November is Women Abuse Prevention Month. And whereas November twenty-fifth is the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women. And whereas femicide rates are on the rise in Ontario with over forty-six femicides in Ontario since November twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. And whereas our community is committed to ending femicide and all forms of gender-based violence. And whereas Indigenous, women of color, South Asian, and Southeast Asian women and girls continue to experience high rates of violence, including femicide, and we're overrepresented within the Ontario Association of Interval and Transitional Houses twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two Annual Femicide List. And whereas last year in Ontario, on average, every seven days, a woman or child lost their lives due to femicide. And whereas in four of the last five years, at least one woman from the District of Misscaming was the victim of femicide. And whereas this month and throughout the sixteen days of activism against gender-based violence, we acknowledge our community's support of the Rapt Encourage Campaign and commitment to ending gender-based violence. And whereas there is an urgent need for greater investment in action to end gender-based violence in our community and throughout Ontario. And whereas it is recognized that the courage of a woman alone is not enough. It takes an entire community to end gender-based violence. Now therefore, I, Stacey White, Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim November twenty-fifth as International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women in the Town of Kirkland Lake. Thank you.
Moved by Council Casey Owens, seconded by Council Dolly Dykens. Be resolved at council sanction, a proclamation for International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women in the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. We will now recess for a short ten-minute break before moving into closed. Okay, item number thirteen, closed session.
Moved by Council Rick Owens, seconded by Council Patrick Riley. Be resolved at Council adjourn at six eighteen given pursuant to section two thirty-nine Q of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended to discuss personal matters about an identifiable individual including municipal or local board employees, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipal or local board, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipal or local boards, advice that is subject to solicitor's fine privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, and a position, fine, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipal or local board for the following reasons: item thirteen point one, request to purchase part of lot seven seventy-five, plan M one one T, one one eighty, east of Comfort Street; item thirteen point two, request to purchase part of lot seven seventy-five, plan M one one eighty, west of Park Street; and item thirteen point three, legal and insurance update.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Okay, we will now move into open session.
Moved by Council Dolly Dykens, seconded by Council Lad Shabbos. Be resolved at council reconvene to open session at seven twenty-eight P M.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Is there any quid pro anima to declare from items arising from closed? Nothing noted from members of council, thank you. Item number fourteen point one, supplemental, request to purchase part lot seven seventy-five, plan M eleven eighty, west of Park Street.
Moved by Council Janice Ranger, seconded by Council Patrick Riley. Be resolved at report number twenty-two-three, BEV forty-eight, entitled Request to Purchase Part of Lot Seven Seventy-Five, Plan M one one eighty, west of Park Street, be received. That council approve the sale of land for part of lot seven seventy-five, plan M one one eighty, to Robert Portillo for one dollars per square foot. That council authorize the Mayor Municipal Clerk to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, that council authorize the bylaw of the sale of property be given three readings at an upcoming meeting.
Any comments or questions?
Please remove me as a seconder.
Okay, is there a seconder for the motion? Counselor Janice Ranger?
Any comments or questions from council?
Can we have a discussion on?
Counselor Kylie?
I'm not in favor of selling this property. I think we, with a little bit of taxation that's involved in it. It presents a risk to the thirty-four landowners below the bottom of the hill. And I don't think, the fact that they, all of them have signed the petition, we owe to them to deal with it. I don't think not dealing with the issue and just letting them worry about it down the road is the answer. I believe we should decline the offer to purchase and remove this from the surplus land list and designate it as green space.
Anything further for members of council? Counselor Owen?
To you, your worship. I've talked to people on both sides of this issue. In accordance with their policy, would we declare land surplus? It is put up for sale and our policy says we sell it. We have guidelines on sale, the guidelines have been met. In terms of any of the concerns that I received, there are currently laws in place on the books, whether it be drainage or noise or interference with the enjoyment of land of your property. There are laws on the books to cover all those things. So they just have to be enforced if there's a problem. I don't see that as an issue. I appreciate the fact that these residents are concerned about their neighborhood. I think that's a good thing and I applaud them for putting together the petition. But if we were to not follow our policy, it could end up costing taxpayers a lot more money because we would have to go to a hearing in Toronto. And also, if we were to bow to the pressure of every petition came into town, nothing would ever get done. And I don't want to be the council that says I'm worried about votes. I want to be a counselor that says I've looked at both sides and I've made a decision, which I believe to be the correct decision for Kirkland Lake. Thank you.
Counselor Ranger? I'm going to pass. Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, to you, Madam Mayor, I do realize that again, between us and the station, the discussion now is to, I guess, sell this property. And since it has any deterrents, so my view is that maybe it's one of those areas that shouldn't happen. Shouldn't have any deterrents, so that everybody in the area would enjoy that space. If anybody built in it. So again, what it is, it what it is, and I feel plenty of people that are uncomfortable. Because what's going to happen is that this consulting, which makes it too easy for you to dare in terms of drainage for them, so I'm not going to vote for this.
Anything further for members of council?
Can I have a recorded vote on this, please?
Okay, so just, did you want to, through you and Madam Mayor?
Yeah, hang on.
Oh, Counselor Owen?
Like I said, there are laws in place to cover all these concerns, including drainage. It is illegal to change the natural drainage property pattern on your property. And if you change that natural drainage pattern, flow, whatever the correct term is, then you are required to put in remedial remedial things to return the drainage back to its natural flow levels. So yes, I agree that the residents have found, oh, have a, have a real concern. But if there is a problem, if there is a problem, and it is not being determined there will be, then there is action that they can take to get it corrected.
Hey, I will have the motion read.
Just to clarify movers and settlers, because there was two councillors that raised their hands. One had already moved, so I couldn't resist the same. Moved by Council Janice Ranger, seconded by Council Rick Owens. They resolved the report number twenty-two-three, BEV forty, entitled Request to Purchase Part of Lot Seven Seventy-Five, Plan M one one eighty, west of Park Street, be received. And that council approved the sale of land for part of lot seven seventy-five, plan M one one eighty, to Robert Portillo for one dollars per square foot. And that council authorized the Mayor Municipal Clerk to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, that council authorized the bylaw of the sale of property be given three readings at an upcoming meeting. Are there record, do you want to ask those any questions?
After hearing their reading of the motion, is there any further questions before we take a roll call? None noted.
A recorded vote has been called at the request of Council Patrick Riley. Counselor Janice Ranger?
Yes.
Counselor Lad Shabbos?
No.
Counselor Casey Owens?
Yes.
Counselor Dolly Dykens?
Abstain.
Counselor Rick Owen?
Yes.
Counselor Patrick Riley?
Nay.
Mayor Stacey White?
Yay.
The motion is carried.
Moving on, item number fourteen point two, request to purchase part of lot seven seventy-five, plan M eleven eighty, east of Comfort Street.
Moved by Council Janice Ranger, seconded by Council Rick Owens. Be resolved at report number twenty-two-three, BEV forty-six, entitled Request to Purchase Part of Lot Seven Seventy-Five, Plan M one one eighty, east of Comfort Street.
Dolly?
I was, I could have waited. Can I have, can we have a recorded vote for this one as well, please?
Certainly. Okay, so I'm going to reread the motion. No problem, that's okay. Moved by Council Janice Ranger, seconded by Council Rick Owens. Be resolved at report number twenty-two-three, BEV forty-six, entitled Request to Purchase Part of Lot Seven Seventy-Five, plan M one one eighty, east of Comfort Street, be received. And that council approved the sale of land for part of lot seven seventy-five, plan M one one eighty, to Michael Francesini for one dollar per square foot. And that council authorized the Mayor Municipal Clerk to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, that council authorized the bylaw of the sale of the property be given three readings at an upcoming meeting.
Any questions before we call the roll call? Counselor Owen?
I just want to say again that this land was declared surplus and under our policy, we put it up for sale. The conditions that we require for the sale have been met, so I owe voting in favor of sale.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just going to have the motion read before the roll call proceeds.
Okay. Moved by Council Janice Rangers, seconded by Council Rick Owens. Be resolved at report number twenty-two-three, BEV forty-six, entitled Request to Purchase Part of Lot Seven Seventy-Five, Plan M one one eighty, east of Comfort Street, be received. And that council approved the sale of land for part of lot seven seventy-five, plan M one one eighty, to Michael Francesini for one dollars per square foot. And that council authorized the Mayor Municipal Clerk to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, that council authorized the bylaw of the sale of property be given three readings at an upcoming meeting.
Before we call the vote, Dolly has her hand up. Yes, Counselor Dykens?
To you, Madam Mayor, to the clerk. On my agenda, item thirteen point one and thirteen point two have the same lot and plan, whatever, okay, so is the only difference the west of Park Street and the east of Comfort? So they are two different, two different lots, even though they have the same, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, we will now proceed with the roll call vote.
A recorded vote has been requested upon, by Council Dolly Dykens for this item. Counselor Janice Ranger?
Yes.
Counselor Lad Shabbos?
Nay.
Counselor Casey Owens?
Yes.
Counselor Dolly Dykens?
Abstain.
Counselor Rick Owen?
Yes.
Counselor Patrick Riley?
Yes.
Counselor Casey White, I'm sorry, Counselor.
Yay.
The motion is carried, please.
Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw, item fifteen point one, bylaw number twenty-three dash oh eight oh.
Moved by Council Patrick Riley, seconded by Council Lad Shabbos. Be resolved at the following bylaw, the red numbered pass, signed by the Mayor Municipal Clerk and sealed the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-three oh eighty, being the bylaw to control the proceedings of council at its meetings held Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, item very unanimous, item number sixteen, adjournment?
Moved by Council Dolly Dykens, seconded by Council Casey Owens. Be resolved at this regular meeting of council, do now adjourn at seven forty-one P M.
All in favor? Opposed, item very unanimous.